I would like to call to order the regular city council meeting of Monday, November the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. I would like for everyone to please stand for our invocation by Dr. Vince Hebner, pastor of First Baptist Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor, and it is an honor to be here tonight. Thank you for allowing me this privilege. Let's pray together. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this great day. We thank you for your love for us. Lord, we thank you for our town. We thank you for the men and women who are called to lead us. We pray that you give them wisdom. We thank you for these monthly meetings so they can come and share what's going on. We celebrate, Lord, with the completion of our downtown area. We thank you for all that have participated in that. Now, I pray that your hand would lead and guide this meeting tonight. Thank you for all the citizens that are here representing their thoughts and concerns and love for our town. We make our request as always, Jesus, in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. First item on our agenda tonight is to actually approve the agenda as presented. I would entertain a motion from council to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve?
Approved.
Second? Have a motion in second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There is none. Next item is approval of our minutes of A, our city council regular meeting of October the tenth, and B, our city council regular work session meeting of October the twenty-fifth. What is the council's pleasure on approval of the minutes as presented?
I'm moved that we approve both sets of minutes at the same time. City council regular meeting of October tenth and the work session of October twenty-fifth.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of our city council regular meeting and our city council work session. All in favor of this motion, please say aye. All opposed? There is none. It is unanimous. Next item is our mayor's comments. In addressing news from our city staff, I would like to announce that city manager Brian Dalton has named Chris J. Keen as the interim public works director until manager Dalton has finished interviewing all applicants for this position. At that time, manager Dalton will name the individual that will be permanently hired for this position. Our city has been very busy these past few weeks with leaves pickup, and I'm asking for all our citizens to please be patient with your leaves as we have had one of our trucks in the repair shop, and it will hopefully, hopefully be back on the job this coming week. Our city crew has been working very hard with limited equipment in addressing this issue. Sea Land has finally completed our downtown revitalization, and the results are magnificent. The city's official dedication and ribbon cutting for this event had to be postponed because of inclement weather this past week. We're in the process of rescheduling this event for early spring of two thousand twenty-three. On Friday of this past week, I was honored and privileged to present a resolution honoring all of our city's veterans at a celebration held at the local American Legion hut. A large crowd was on hand for this event, for this event, and Pastor Bill Lowe was the keynote speaker in which he gave a history of how Cherryville was a part of the first uniform patch issued to a special unit of our armed forces. I want to take this opportunity at this time to honor all the men and women that have served our country and defended our freedoms. Thanks again for your service. City manager Dalton has informed, has informed the city council that he has received an email from the state that they will continue testing soil samples at West Gate Park in December and should have some answers for the city sometime in January. The city has met with engineer and school officials regarding the proposed park at Cherryville Elementary. They have informed the city that they are moving forward with this project, and plans are to build an all-purpose field and track at this location. Some trees will be left to create a buffer for the neighborhood. No lights or bathrooms are in the plans for this project. They are in the plan now?
They are in the plan.
Okay, bathrooms are in the plans, but no lights. Okay. And on this coming Saturday, November the nineteenth, I will be volunteering to help with the community-wide Thanksgiving dinner sponsored by the Cherryville Area Ministries, and I'd also like to thank Food Line of Cherryville for the donation of food for this event. These meals will be open to all persons from eleven a.m. until two p.m. on a first-come basis, as long as the food holds out. This concludes the mayor's comments, and we'll now go to the next item on our agenda, and that is citizens to be heard. If I have any citizen that would like to be heard, they may do so by coming to the podium, stating their name and address, and we would like to remind them that comments will be strictly held to five minutes. And at this time, I have one citizen that has signed up that wishes to speak, so Mr. Al Putnam, if you will come to the podium, you have the floor now.
Hi, my name is Al Putnam, two oh nine North Jacob Street in Cherryville, when I'm, when I'm in the state. That's kind of where I reside. I am vice president of, let me turn to the right page here, excuse me. I'm vice president of the Cherryville Historical Association. And I have a check tonight to present publicly and officially for the chair, from the Cherryville Historical Association, and it's the annual building payments for the first fifty years. We don't have any records of any payments being done, but there is a lease of that building for a dollar a year. And so I don't know, Mayor, how you'd like to present that. I'd just be perfectly glad to hand that to you.
That'd be fine.
Okay, so, um, so I speak tonight on that account, and I am backed by at least five, maybe even more. I have one fellow board member with me tonight, and I would like for y'all to ask, I will ask for your indulgence with us. We've not had strong leadership. We currently don't have strong leadership. And what I will, would ask of you is that we will resolve our issues, but it's gonna take a little time. I think by January first, that things will be a whole lot better. And as we change our bylaws to, that haven't been updated in over twenty-some-odd years, that we'll have roles and responsibilities. And so everyone will have the ability then to, to know what lane they're in and, and all that. Again, the city and the museum are, should be two separate things, as long as, as long as things go white. But I also ask that if you would get comments, concerns, or anything else, if you would, as the city leaders, as the city employees, as a city manager, if you would direct those back to where they came from? And, and from that standpoint, we will address it. And January first, for sure, if not, if not here the mid of, mid Nov-, or mid-December, is that we will, I will assure you that we will address them firmly and with a positive result. And our intentions is to keep everything, because we have some problems that we have to take care of, and we will be very discreet in dealing with those problems. But they will be dealt with swiftly also. So, again, I ask that you refer back to where your, the problems concerned about the Cherryville Historical Association, the museum, back to its board of directors. And we meet every, the fourth Tuesday of, or not, the second Tuesday of every month. And typically, it's at the museum or the community building next door, in the next-door room. Just depends on conditions as we maintain and get, get the museum back in order. So, so one side question, I'm done with that part of it, or whatever. We, we, we will address our own problems. We don't need it to be taken care of. But in the budget stuff, as I was going through tonight, looking, looking at it to be kind of prepared of what was gonna happen, there's something called a POWELL bill, P-O-W-E-L-L. Is that correctly spelled?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
That deals with our maintenance of our roads, sidewalks, so forth.
Sounds, sounds good. I, I, I'm thinking POWELL, P-O-W-E-L-L, but, but thank you for the clarification.
Okay, I have one question for Mr. Putnam. Do you know how many members you actually have on the museum association?
There, there are currently ten board members. There were seven, and someone came up and said that, oh, well, we don't know who's really on the board and who's not. So, that brought back a couple of people that were, that weren't there, that had, had, had kind of bowed out, but quote, no official notice of that. But, but, so, so I think it's ten currently, but we're gonna whittle, whittle it down. I can't tell you where the number is, because I've got others to, that have been put on that. But we like the number five. Brian and I talked today about the number three. So, if we establish roles and responsibilities in the bylaws, then we can probably address that.
Okay. Does any council members have any questions for Mr. Put?
Can you provide us a list of who is on the board?
Sure.
As to how many you have, Al?
Sure.
I don't know if you have, like, members, and then you have different committees or anything that breaks out, or?
It's a, there, there is a set of board of directors, and that's really the only members, quote, memberships that we have. Not individuals.
So, my question is, so the proposal that we put before y'all, has that been discussed? Is that off the table?
It, it, it has. I wouldn't necessarily say it was off the table, but as I, as I talked about roles and responsibilities, and let's develop a set of bylaws that we can, can go with. There's a lot of other things associated with that. But there, there is resistance to having a majority of the board members appointed by the city. I'll just go ahead and say that, I mean, it's.
And I, I know you said you wanted to keep it separate from the city, but, you know, the city does own the building, and you currently aren't paying any POWELL bill either, so that's, the city does have something.
Well, if I could ask the city clerk to send me that agreement, or however we did, but that was supposedly, and the maintenance and upkeep was supposedly, that's spelled out, I'm sure, in the agreement. So, we will do, we'll, we'll look at, look at that.
I think as long as it is, the city owns the building, then there was no charge for utilities, as far as I remember.
Okay.
But again, we would have to research that.
It was before our, all of our times.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, and that's, that's definitely why the bylaws needed to be amended.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no question about that. No question about that.
Okay, well, I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, sir.
Check.
Mayor, I'm gonna recommend that you schedule this for a future work session and not accept this check.
Yes.
At this time.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you hear that? Okay. He's asked that I not accept this check, and that we bring that up at the next work, work session. So, if you can attend that, if you'll bring it back then, or?
I'm just gonna leave it.
Won't be cashed? No, we can't.
We're not taking possession of the check. It'll be left here, and I recommend that you check it with you.
Okay. All right. Okay, we'll move on now to item number eight, and this is consideration to lower the speed limit on North Jacob Street, and our city manager Brian Dalton will lead us through that discussion.
Yes, Mayor, council, Chief Jinks approached us about this. He got a lot of complaints. This is right there at First Baptist Church between First Street and one fifty, and it appears that a lot of people are possibly, you know, turning off of one fifty, trying to beat people from the red lights and stuff down on one fifty, and they get going at a pretty high rate of speed right there. They're not really going over what the speed limit currently is, because I think it's thirty-five right now.
Thirty-five, yeah.
It's thirty-five right now on North Jacob, but, you know, with that area being where a lot of kids are getting dropped off on a daily basis, we will question that the city council look at reducing that speed limit down to twenty-five. Is that what you agree? If we could reduce that down to that level, it would probably make a big impact on trying to keep kids safe when they're getting dropped off in the morning and after.
Well, I have a question for Keith, the Chief Jinks. Ten miles lower, is that really gonna protect injury? I mean, has it been proven that ten miles lower speed limit is, is gonna be less injuries to someone? My, my concern with that is, if you keep lowering speed limit on all the streets, people aren't gonna wanna come through Cherryville. If, if every time we turn around, we lower it, I know we have three or four other places we've lowered the speed limit. Have we put a speed trap sign up there to actually monitor the speed limits through there?
So, we have went down and we have ran radar on that street, because we were getting complaints. The problem that we have is, it's not posted. So, therefore, it falls to thirty-five mile per hour unless posted. So, everyone's doing around thirty-five. The problem is, is the small children are getting out, and the, the workers there at First Baptist have a concern if a child darts out.
Okay.
And no injury will still come from twenty-five miles an hour, twenty miles an hour. But if you lower the speed there where children are at, like at a school, if they dart out into traffic, it gives the driver a little bit more reaction time where they maybe could stop. No one's speeding in excess of thirty-five that we have seen. It's just that thirty-five is a speed limit, because it's not posted anywhere. Right across Highway one fifty onto Hick Street, going up toward the high school, it is twenty-five. It is posted there. But for whatever reason, there has never been a sign on that stretch between First and one fifty. So, the drivers that are coming, doing thirty-five are actually doing the speed limit by law.
Okay. I was just, definitely, we want to be concerned for the children's safety, by all means. I just thought maybe if we put a sign up for certain hours, that it would be twenty-five, and the rest, it would be thirty-five. But I'm perfectly fine with making it twenty-five if you have it on Hick Street.
And it, it was up to council, I mean, it's, it's whatever council wanna do. I just looked at it, and when I, when I saw that it was twenty-five across one fifty, I think that was the intent, and I think a sign was never put up, so it fell to thirty-five unless otherwise posted in the sea limit, so.
I know, I mean, going to where my grandchildren are at school in Charlotte, to get, I had to get to their school when they were small. You go through a neighborhood, and it was a good bit, about a half a mile up there, and there must have been eight or nine speed bumps on that. It's horrible, getting on speed bumps, and you had to stay slow. And in some neighborhoods I've seen where there's no through traffic, at the time, the children are being either dropped off, left either way. But changing it to twenty-five is probably the cheaper alternative than what they've done in Charlotte. Some of theirs to slow the traffic down.
It's only a block that we're talking about.
Yeah, just a little stretch.
Shouldn't be no problem.
And it, it's not a lot of traffic, from what we've seen. It just seems that in the morning time, when the children are getting out at First Baptist Preschool, the traffic is coming off of one fifty, I think, trying to beat other people to beam intermediate so they don't have to sit to like to drop their children off. They're just using it as a cut-through, is what it looks like. So, it's not a heavy amount of traffic.
I'll just stop that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with it.
Just a block away, I mean, just one block, yeah.
Okay. Well, I would entertain a motion from council that we, it would require a vote for us to, to lower that speed limit.
Make a motion to lower it to twenty-five miles an hour.
I second it.
Have a motion and a second to lower the speed limit on North Jacob Street from thirty-five to twenty-five. And we will post a sign for the twenty-five.
We'll get that done tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Any discussion by any council members? All right? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. Okay. We'll move to item nine, and this is a consideration to set a date for a public hearing, and this is in reference to a special use permit for two thirty Dick Bean Road. And we have our planning and zoning director, Elick Blackburn. And this is page seventeen through twenty-three in your agenda packets.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council members, city staff, and citizens. Tonight, we're just asking for a public hearing to be set for December twelfth at six o'clock at this location to consider the special use application for a cut stone, kind of granite countertop and other countertop business. This is not, we're gonna be cutting the slab out, but more of making the refined process, or cuts for your sinks and more specific cuts.
And what is located in that building at the present?
Currently, it's just used for the personal owner's storage.
Okay.
Before, it used to be the Masonry Unlimited. Several businesses were interested in it.
Which is, if you're coming up Wallaby, and you make the right turn toward Walmart, it's the first building.
Yes, sir, I believe there's between eleven to thirteen acres there, and they're only occupying that one small section.
Okay. Does any council members have any question for Elick, our planning and zoning director? Not, I would entertain a motion that we set the date of December the twelfth at our next regular council meeting for a public hearing in regards to this matter.
Make a motion, set a public hearing.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second to set the date of December the twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, for a public hearing regarding the special use permit for two thirty Dick Bean Road. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And there is none. Okay, we'll move on to item ten. Again, this is consideration to set a date for a public hearing, and this is in regards to rezoning the property located on the corner of South Pink Street and South Mountain Street, and that's parcel number two zero seven zero nine six. They want to rezone from general manufacturing and commercial to residential, single, and two-family. And again, our planning and zoning director, Elick Blackburn, is here. That's pages twenty-four through twenty-nine on your laptops. And this is right across from Caputo's Pizza.
Correct, yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir, it's, it's on the left-hand side of South Pink Street as it intersects with South Mountain Street there. I believe it, right now, it's a vacant field. There is a small section of the property that was carved out for that cell phone tower there. The applicant, Mr. Charles, Charles Alvarez, he's the owner of Expert Builders. He's interested in that property, putting up a single, one, single-family or two-single-family homes. He said three would be a stretch. He's not sure if he can do it, but he says hopefully at least one, maybe two.
Okay. Any council member?
That property is outside of our corporate limits, but it is within our ETJ.
Okay. Council member got any questions for our planning and zoning director, Elick Blackburn, in regards to this matter?
Has this been brought to the zoning board?
It has, yes, sir. They approved unanimously.
So, it's right there in front of, what used to be in that building?
Is that McQuaid?
Dog, uh.
Yeah, so it's right in front of that, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that invisible dog fence.
It's the land right there at the corner. So, when you turn off of South Pink on to South Mountain, there on your left-hand side will be, I believe it is, point nine two acres.
It'll be houses in front of the building. Is that right, Elick?
Yes, ma'am. I think one is gonna be facing South Pink, and the other one's gonna be facing South Mountain.
All that other is business property, isn't it?
Correct, yes, sir.
But there's residential cross from, on both.
Right, okay.
Yes, sir. And that middle line of the road is our corporate limits.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to set the public hearing for December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two at our next regular city council meeting.
I make a motion to set the date of December twelfth for a public hearing for this rezoning.
Okay, have a motion and a second to set the date of December twelfth of two thousand twenty-two to consider the public hearing for the rezoning of the property located on the corner of South Pink Street and South Mountain Street. Okay, all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And there is none. Okay. Thank you, Elick.
Thank you all.
Moving on to item number eleven is other business. At this time, do I have any other business from city council?
I do. I have a question, because I got, had two requests today, and I'm glad we brought up that about the leaves. And perhaps maybe you can help me, or Chris can. These two ladies called me, and their question was, why do the leaves get picked up on one side, and the ones directly across the street doesn't? But I know you've gotta turn that thing and come down, but I know today, and that was what was confusing, they got picked up at my house, and they also got picked up across the street. I don't know how it is, I don't know when they have to empty it or what, but both of them said theirs got picked up, and then the neighbors are all blowing back over in their yard because they're not picked up. I don't know how a procedure works.
Basically, it's exactly what you said. What happened, they were grabbing at these neighborhoods last week. They had so many leaves, they had to dump four times before they got down one street. So, they would pick up, you know, get full, go dump, you know, pick up, go dump. And what happens is, they run out of time, basically, and they have another day, so they have to come back another day.
Okay.
To the other side. But that's basically what happens. As soon as the truck gets full, they have to go dump, and it's a line, which is where we don't get both sides. So, hopefully, when we get the other truck back, hopefully by middle of this week, hopefully that's, a lot of that's gonna be resolved, and we'll have both trucks up and running in and out.
Okay. Plus the sweeper.
Plus the sweeper.
Okay.
The street sweeper runs a great job.
So, so we'll have three vehicles working on the leaves.
So, when you look at, you know, West Gate, Crown Creek, you know, Elm Street, Mulberry, you know,
you know, Mayor's Neighborhood down around Spring Street, Hawthorne.
Lot of trees.
Those, those are absolutely the run of the mill. It takes a lot of time.
They do. One was on Mulberry, that's where one lives on Mulberry and the other one lives over in your, right, Spring or somewhere like that.
That's typically what happens is, and that's why we can't get a whole street or neighborhood so to speak, given that we have to dump, we run out of time.
Well, I was trying to explain that to them, that, you know, the arm is only on one side of the truck and they have to run the whole limb before they come back. But I noticed when I was leaving tonight, it got both sides of ours.
That's what happened.
Okay, sounds good.
Good.
I've got three things.
All right.
Had a citizen call me, Dave, about the lot on the corner of Depot and Main, that they finally cleared the piles of dirt out. Is that going to be paved or what's going to happen to that?
You remember, that's a lot that we actually own. So definitely up to us to decide what we're going to do.
I, I told him, I thought it was in the plan to, for Main Street, but I guess not.
No, it was not in the plan for Main Street, it was not in the project. That'd be an additional cost for us to figure out, but of course, at least we do want to pave it.
And now, according to five years, it's going to be a gateway to Main Street.
Correct. And then we want to put a sign up, so we do need to pave it at some point. C-Land was good enough to basically clear it and get it, get it cleared as much as possible for us.
Yeah, they got those two old post bases gone, that looks better.
Yep, they got those up, of course.
I think that's where the gas station was.
Car wash, yeah.
If you remember, we probably bought that lot, what would you say, probably ten years ago, maybe? I know the guy down in Kraus, I think, owned it, he and his family, too, the city.
Another thing I'd like to thank David for his explanation on the Main Street after the, what, the video that Wise did. He did a great job, if y'all didn't see it, explaining why and the cost and how the merchants didn't have to bear the brunt of the tax. He did a great job on that.
I had several complaints about potholes still. Are we working on that, getting some asphalt?
Absolutely. We're doing that every Friday that we possibly can. You know, we have been able to do, use some of the millions to actually do some passions throughout town, but we do have a lot of passion that we're still trying to catch up on, absolutely.
They got covered all.
Is that all? I thought you had three things.
I can't remember what.
I don't know. And if you had, if Chaffee's drive it, maybe you don't.
I'll show them.
To answer your question there, we went ahead and we, Chris Keen did put it out for bid and got some bids to repave right there around the school because the school buses has caused a lot of damage there. We're trying to coordinate that to see if it's going to be possible. We got a, I think their low bid on it was around fifty-five thousand to repave back there. And we're trying to coordinate, if weather allows, possibly we'll have to see how in December when they're out of there.
Okay. Any other business from council? Any thing from staff?
I will go over the financial statement, I'm going to write it quick with you and just give you some information here. If you look at the general fund, it is down three hundred and seventy dollars. And some of this is a little confidential. Last year at this same time, it was down over five hundred dollars. So we're actually two hundred thousand better. So with that, with that being said, you know, we're starting to get into the time of year before we do get in probably ninety-five percent of our property taxes. Electric fund is up, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Solid waste is up eighty-three hundred. And water sewer fund is currently still down two hundred and six thousand. But the reason for that is we've already paid for the generator that we talked about last month, plus we paid right at three hundred thousand for the excavation debt to be done. So those monies will be transferred from the ARPA funds back into the water sewer fund, which will make it go into deposit pretty quickly. So if you look up, I also provided you with an email where I got the bank balance today for finance, you can see that we are doing very well, I think, financially. We have already made our first bond payment of four hundred and some odd thousand. We made that the other week. We've already paid the debt on the fire truck. So we, we basically paid around five hundred thousand of our roughly eight hundred thousand debt, twenty years. So we're almost there on our debt payment. So come January, February, if you go back and look at the history of these financial statements, that's when you're going to start seeing the big jumps in our, in our balances.
And I might add, this is actually through September.
Correct.
Uh, September thirtieth. So it's still, we, a month behind, but we stay a month behind.
You wait a month, a few months.
Okay.
Thanks for taking your time, we're reconciling all that. But the email that I provide you is statements as of today.
Okay.
Mayor, it came back to me.
Okay, Councilman Freeman, his memory is.
You've heard about this, a citizen has complained about a drop-off next to the Rotary Park on Academy Street.
Yes.
Y'all filled that in yet?
Wait a minute now.
You know, where the pavement has caved in a little bit there and there's a drop-off? We had a citizen complain about his tire getting damaged there.
You know, one.
I remember that. It's, it's actually off the road, yes, we, we can't fill that in.
I asked him if he, if he wanted to be paid for the tire and he said, no, he just wanted that hole to be filled in with gravel.
And what that is, is that's where a resident had to get a new sewer tap and it's off the road.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not on the pavement, there it is off the road. We can go in and fill it with gravel.
Is that right in the curve?
It's right next to the park.
Before you get to Spring Street?
Right there at the park.
It's a.
Yeah, that's, that's in someone's yard.
A little bit.
It's kind of, it's kind of between the park and the yard. I don't know who, who owns that.
It's probably, it's definitely off the place.
Yeah, okay.
It's off the road.
It's a bad shoulder there anyway.
Yeah, okay. All right. Anything else? Staff? Council? If not, okay. We'll go to item twelve, and this is consideration to enter into a closed session in regards to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three one eight dot one one dot parentheses three. And I would ask council for a motion to enter into closed session at this time.
Same here.
Have a motion second to enter into closed session. We will do so. And we will, after exiting closed session, we will be back into regular session.